Powerful and purposeful PD we've ever been engaged in. And Sean, Mary serves me right, kind of started with you and kind of spread from there. So why don't you just give us a little bit of an overlay and then if we can hear each the other principal speak out of here.
So at the Rollins School, we used these two consultants last year and paid for it from our budget and they were terrific. Well organized, high, high level content. I mean, they're national speakers. They've literally written the book on the content. But what's most impressive is when they come in, we had some consultants earlier that were good and got us going, but they really push the staff, know the most recent content and standards and then know how to, just like teachers do with kids, get teachers to, you know, the zone of possible development, like just so that they can take on some new learning and give them good content. And they do it in very meaningful ways in the classroom, modeling and giving feedback as well as, you know, just so it's not just stand and deliver, here's what to go do. But they can show it, they can give feedback. And so the work, it's nice that we're, they've come through all of our schools and said we're not really that separate on how we do things, but, and they can honor the approaches in each building while giving this content. So it's not like envisions where everything's, you know, the teachers have a good starting base. This is really, you know, help push us to that next level and take teachers from where they are and give them more. So, and the professional development this year, to make this plan as a district and bring the community to everybody has been fantastic.
Great, thanks Joel.
Yeah, no, I think that, and I would say the same for my teachers, myself, that are participating in this group, it's, this committee, it's been really exciting to have, it's more than just professional development. It's an approach at looking at a long range, multi-year vision about literacy and how do we get our teachers, how do we get our students in reading and writing to go from good to great? And I know you use that phrase here and it's just, it's for us, you know, sometimes it comes out of an organic place. Our teachers are working on building their capacity at the elementary level in mathematics this year. They're spending a lot of the PD time, the rank and file are spending PD time on mathematics, building those skills, understanding the curriculum. And so we knew literacy was next, you know, to incorporate best practices and to build those skills across the district. And so we said that, you know, let's pull together as many stakeholders as we could, representatives from literacy specialists and special education and pre-K, K1, 2, 3, 4, 5, bring them together with the elementary principals and Patty and map out this vision over the course of this year for what it would look like down the road, two years, three years, four years and so on. And so, you know, it's been an exciting process to be able to put on the table all of what that might look like in terms of the resources that we might need and advocate for with you folks and, you know, what that looks like in terms of professional development for the teachers, but also what it looks like in terms of instructional methods and what we might need in terms of curriculum resources and those kinds of things. And so this year has been about a very thoughtful, for me, a very thoughtful approach to where we want to go with literacy.
Great, thanks. Ross?
So being the newcomer at the table of principals here, I would say, you know, coming in over the summer of 2015, when I started a year and a half ago, I heard a lot from teachers about some of this sort of start-stop professional development that they would have, they'd have a little bit, they would stop. Different consultants or different people would come in. That was during the 14th, 15th school year at Center. And beyond that, it sounds like the Jabalite format during PD days was typically it. What I experienced last year as a Jabalite leader for the second grade was that, you know, you put the three different buildings of second grade teachers in the room and they've all had different experiences and we're supposed to be working on one thing, which is great if we can get them all on the same page. But then what's happening in K and 1, what's happening in 3, 4 and 5? We're not, it's not coordinated, people end up in silos. What happens with this approach is that we sort of, we do have to back up a little bit. Sean's group did some, or teachers did some intensive work and I witnessed that when I was looking at possibly working with them this year, the consultants this year, to see how they operated and then this district discussion began. But walking into a conference room and to see teachers have out their planners, they have out best practice books on writing, they have out authentic children's books, they have out highlighters. It's ongoing authentic work that teachers need to do. What I like about their approach and the consultants that we're looking at and we're doing the work right now is that while this budget process is sort of linear and step by step, what they teach teachers to do is to be fluid. So what we have on paper for the plan ahead, they will say in front of us, they will say in front of you, if you ever spoke to them, that they're not going to guarantee that these are going to be every single step that they cover in order, but this is the general, what we're looking for. They are going to ebb and flow for the district based on what our needs are and what teachers need, but they will accomplish their goals and they will accomplish our goals. The process might look a little different. The work in the buildings, those six days they want to spend in each building, that's where the most critical work is because that's where they can differentiate the most. So you think about a classroom, if our cohort of K to 5 teachers is a classroom, they're all going to get that mini lesson, that upfront PD, that stand and deliver of best practices, of research, of structures and organization for reading and writing instruction, of looking at standards. Then within the building, that's where you're talking about like your differentiated small groups. That's where like our teachers meet with small groups of students to talk to them. What did you hear? What did you learn? Where are you at? What can I help you with? And they're, just like Sean said it, and I believe Joel said it too, they are going to push our teachers and they already have. I have a very strong teacher in my building who's on this committee and she's also a children's author and she is being pushed and she's appreciating everything that they're doing. And so I, my litmus test is that staff that I sent and, you know, I'm on the team, but I try to step back a little bit during those meetings and they are 100% in on this process. And knowing that the process is not, we can't define it for five years today, we can sketch it for five years today, but budget wise, we know what it's going to take to get the first year done next year and then reevaluate every single year moving forward so that we can fade out their support over the next three to five years.
So is this, is this a five-year commitment?
No, well, we're, no, and not in terms of monetary, like if you heard that, really what they're doing is, this is really the big year of the commitment right now. The whole notion is that ultimately they do themselves a job. And one of the things I really like about this too, and Joel had alluded to it and I know Sean, you spoke, you and I have spoken about it too, is that this is really building upon already pre-existing strategies. It's that teachers already have, it's about honing those skills, about refining them and bringing a nice level of consistency across the district so that we're all talking the same language. And again, with the goal that by the time every one of those kids hits Nesho Regional High School, they'll all be at that same level, right? So I think that there's a lot of good thinking behind this and I certainly, I certainly support the movement and the work that you're doing right now. It is an exciting room to be in if you ever see what goes on and it's packed in here. You can't get a parking spot out there and the energy is just incredible in the building. So they're off to a tremendous start. So I think, you know, I think that they're all sitting here tonight advocating and saying, we want to continue to push forward with this program.
So I have a bunch of questions, but before I ask mine, if you guys have some.
Lynn.
Is this mandatory, are all teachers going to be taking this?
It's a commitment.
Yeah, it was me through our professional development day. So, but right now, what we're doing right now, what we're doing right now is the, it's the vision piece. It's building the capacity with small groups of stakeholders that filter out to the larger groups of stakeholders, if that makes sense.
That's what this year's work is.
Yes.
You're talking about next year's work though.
So next year, it's just like we're providing the training and the professional development for math this year. It would be that way for ELA next year.
Okay, so next year, they're all going to go through these six days of training in each building?
So there's, there's going to be district-wide days or half-days, however the calendar shakes out, what we can agree with them on, that every teacher would hear, K to 5, would hear this and do the same work. Then there's the additional six days for each building where one of them will come out and work with grade levels on that nitty-gritty, open up the books, let's, you know, talk about your students, let's talk about where you're at. And that's where they're building the true capacity for teachers because it's not just that listening piece that our teachers can sit and listen, what we want them to do is to be able to apply the skills on their own. And everybody's come from a different place with training or education with regards to literacy.
So these six days, it's not observation, they're actually going to be training the teachers?
They are working with teachers, they are, what I observed, what I observed at NRE is they're in the conference room, they work with the teachers for a little bit, they talk about where they're at, they go in, they will model something briefly and then they'll pull those teachers back up and pull them together. What did you see? What are your questions? I would do this differently, I would do that differently and the teachers are really building capacity.
So this is time away from students where we're going to post-up student there and it's not?
It depends on how we structure it out.
A little bit, a little bit.
There's going to be some of that, yeah. But it's not six full days for every teacher.
Right. You might, the way I'd worked it in the past is like first and second grade might meet with them for hour and a half in the morning, you know, so, and then, you know, third and fourth grade.
Perhaps better said, it's six full days for the consultants for each elementary school, but collect the teachers over the day for particular workshopy activities. Right. Depending upon how the structure works out for each day, at the end, if you have six days in your building, you have K to 5 teachers, essentially each teacher will have a total of six hours with these consultants by the end of the year. Right, one full school day, you would look at it that way.
Okay, so I guess we need to measure, we want to start measuring all these initiatives?
So, so before you go there, I just, because this is one of my questions too, and I want to make sure that we're focused on, is the question going to be, sorry Lynn, what's the desired outcome and how do you know that we've achieved success?
Through assessment, I would say. We're hoping to purchase a new assessment system and that measures student growth and we track the, we track reading progress over time, so it's something that we can continue to monitor. I think that's probably the most efficient way.
I think there's two ways to measure, ultimately student achievement, right? I mean, that's what it's all about. So, you know, continue, as Patty said, watch those. The other is we're, we're working as that group to have definable outcomes each year. So like the teachers will implement, you know, these strategies, they will use that, you know, so there are definable teacher goals too. I mean, the consultants are helping us do that, so it's clear, they're not just coming in and doing training. What are we going to do in that training this year? And they're doing it in certain areas too, so.
And the assessment is bundled into the cost, the 94/7 meal.
So thank you for coming tonight, first of all. I agree with your sensitivity for the teachers and all these different initiatives, something that I heard when I first came in and survey and so forth, so that's always stuck with me. And this sounds, if I'm, if I'm understanding this, it almost sounds like a little bit of a paradigm shift for teachers themselves, both in terms of PD and the material and the way it's being taught. And then the other side is an increased benefit to the student. I mean, are there, am I, is that fair to say there's like those two components?
Yeah, no, I think it is fair. I think we're already on the trajectory of the paradigm shift, that if you come into the buildings now, you'll see a lot more, you don't see a typical, the whole class is going through a thick anthology of stories, that those days are past. You know, we have book rooms where kids are pulling different texts that are, that have been leveled, but, so we're in that, in all three schools you'll see that. I think where the, that next level of paradigm shift comes in is in looking at that, that type of, we call it the workshop model, where there's a specific lesson and the work, the meaningful work that kids are doing in reading and writing are tied to that in some way, but are also almost individualized to their instructional levels. So, so yes.
So that takes me to the next thing, that sounds great. MCAS, I'm going to call it MCAS 2.0, but what, like what sort of risk are we all at for that coming out and this not aligning?
No, no. And actually, I think.
That was for sounding.
I feel pretty strong about that.
I think that's, so as I said, eight years ago, when I came in the district, we started with some other consultants who I thought were good and brought us to a certain level at that time. These two are really going to look deeper and MCAS 2.0 is more about analytics and synthesizing, you know, higher level thinking, which is all in the standards. And they really get the teachers to look at the standards deeply, assess, pre-assess students, where are they? And then how do we use that to move them forward? So, so it matches that because we're looking at curriculum and all that at the same time, so.
Sean, I'm just thinking too, one of the things we talked about, you just touched on it, but I'm going to ask you to speak a little bit further on it, is the differentiated instruction. And remember we said, we'll have to bring this up around the school committee because we're also looking at the other end. So do you want to just touch base on that too, please?
Sure, I mean, you know, one of the core components is whether it's in writing or reading, it's just right, so, because you're, you're working at too high, too low, you know. So it allows students to be working at their just right level. And then, and because the teachers are using assessment to drive the instruction, I mean, the core outcome is expected all, but, you know, you might have students reading more books more quickly while some are working on a one book longer because that's what, you know, the conferencing takes. Or writing, you know, more writing pieces while another person is really spending time on an individual writing piece longer. So, so at both ends, students are going to be in small groups and conference with and so either enriched or supported where they are, you know what I mean?
Is it flexible to student populations?
Yes.
So that's, that's a big question. Is it flexible student populations and how does this feed, because it's K5, and, I mean, continuity is a good thing, right? How does it feed into the middle school? Because you mentioned to get them to the high school, but this is K5, so how does it feed into a middle school program? And is there a deficit at the middle school program? And then the final question is, five-year, and I get it, they work themselves out of a job, but for planning purposes through the budget, we should really understand what the financial implications are going to be if we're all bought into it. What's the financial implication year over year?
I, can I ask a question?
Oh, sure.
I had a similar question about the 6 through 8 chunk of years. So I know, I know AmesWeb addresses both ELA and math, right? I mean, it doesn't do the same things as Fuentes and Pennell. I wondered if there would be an opportunity to eliminate that AmesWeb piece for the literacy, okay.
It's all under discussion for the committee right now.
Yeah, we're looking at all the assessment pieces and seeing which ones fit and.
Because you have the AddExL for math, right? That you could use and now he's a major Fuentes.
So it's not in addition to?
But then there's a gap for the 6 through 8.
So Laura was mentioning that her English teachers went to a conference in Maine, right?
Yeah, yeah.
They're going to, is that something that you guys are coordinating with them?
Yes, the middle school, the middle school ELA teachers are using Fuentes and Pennell right now.
Oh, okay.
So the transition for the assessment, what's that?
For their Amherst greeters.
Right, so for the, for the assessment piece, I think there's an easy transition for.
Now, we're going to want to wrap up because I just know that we've got a lot of other folks here that are sitting and we need to get them through too. So again, this is all about the budget, right? So we understand the program, but the question is, does it offset the cost of something that we currently have that we're going to sunset or eliminate? And what financial impact does this have for year 2, 3 and 4 and 5? We need to have some type of perspective on that because we're buying into a subscription all.
Ross and Patty can take those.
Yeah, so I'm looking at that from my lens. So if you look under the teaching and learning department, those two pieces, if you look at that Fuentes and Pennell, the benchmark assessment system, that BAS, those 82 kits, that's more or less a one-time purchase. I would assume that moving forward, any other additional kits would just fall to building budgets. So let's say we end up with an extra section some year where we need to purchase one or we decide that we want every special education teacher to have one, or whatever it may be. Whatever it is, those would fall to building-based budgets, so that's a one-time really investment.
Are the student libraries annual, Ross?
So those would be annual and I think we're going to learn more about those as we move forward about what kids need. That's something that I pick up on very quickly in my building is that we have our classroom libraries all organized differently and they're at different capacities for how much they have and what's applicable for what they're doing. So I think that's where years 2, 3, 4 and 5, we might want to shift and add more money. But again, the professional development for the district-wide piece is a one-year, for that many days is a one-year, I believe.
So the 6, so the 54, the 45 is one, is just a one-year?
Not totally. I think that would shrink over time.
Right.
In that 3485, that's a one-time piece for the, for the district budget. Those classroom student libraries, I don't know hard line if that's going to go up or down over the next three years.
So in my experience with the classroom libraries, some years it's higher, some years it's lower, you know, depending on replenishment and stuff, that's, that's pretty consistent. I'm always buying books.
But it's cumulative. It's, the goal is to acquire many books at different levels, so it's a cumulative effect. The other piece I wanted to point out is, as you can see, we're front-loading this professional development. As we get down to year 5, we're looking at less. So we're anticipating that the greatest cost will be next year.
Well, we're anticipating, but yeah, we need to have, yeah, so it makes sense, but so, and I don't mean to rush you, but we just have, I just feel terrible for the people sitting back there. And then the last question is, maybe you answered it, I missed it, but how does this tie into the middle school and what ties into the high school? Joel, do you want to, do you want to take that?
Yeah, so I think that in some ways, the, where the middle school ELA teachers are is part of the driver for, for this articulated district vision planning. In some ways, I think that they're already there. You know, you see the literature circles, you see the writer's workshop, you see, you see that approach in the classrooms now. So I think, you know, having the opportunity to have, you know, that kind of approach to the critical reading and the authentic multiple types of writing coming into the middle school will, would be a very smooth transition for them.
I agree.
Any last quick questions? Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Thanks for the perspective. We're going to talk a little early childhood next and we're going to bring Cindy Maxfield to the table and Joan will probably just be in the back, back for you there in case we need some answers. Joan, you don't necessarily need to come up to the table, but if we've got a question for you, that'd be great.
I'll come up with you.
How's going to join? Awesome. So the school committee asked to bring back Cindy and you were looking at some further updates or some information, if you will, and we actually got some more updates even today from our principals that she's going to bring forward tonight. One of the questions we had talked about just briefly though, was the whole notion of full-day kindergarten and what the tuition was and such, and I think Cindy's just going to kind of talk about that and then certainly take any questions that you might have. So Cindy, did you want to give a little bit of an overview of some of the information that you've brought tonight that's just available for them? Or Pat, I know you've got a list there as well that we can circulate for them.
Well, do we have those to hand out? Do we want to talk about the numbers first?
Talk about the numbers.
Yeah, so the numbers that Pat, of course, has prepared relates to our enrollments and for FY '18, we are, according to the census, there were 202 children on the census that are expected to attend kindergarten this coming year. Out of those children, what we're seeing here, this one, this number 152 are the ones that have registered for kindergarten so far. And this was a number that we had last week. This week, we now have, and that was out of 167 parents we had heard from. This week, we now have 188 parents that we've heard from. So those numbers continue to fluctuate and will fluctuate until September.
Cindy, can I just clarify? I want to make sure I understand this, I don't know, you guys might already get it. So the census says there are 202 kindergarten-age students and so far, you've heard from 188 that say they want to bring their kids here?
Yes.
Okay, just want to clarify.
As of today, that's the numbers the principals and secretaries have given us.
It's a big number.
So is that kids or parents? Because you spoke about parents earlier for that number of students.
Well, it's 188 children that have enrolled at this grade.
Is that higher or lower? What is this, is this a larger number?
It's a little bit lower than like, than me in respective years, a little bit lower than last year, but.
Is the 200, what is it, 200?
202, that census number is down from 211 last year. But actually, I'm not even sure what the census number was last year. That's the amount we've had enrolled. So we could very well, that number's pretty close because in other years, we've had things like 239 children enrolled. So that, that number's pretty close to last year, so I think we're looking at around the same enrollment this year. Just because we've only heard from 188, that's typical there, you know, the secretaries are sending letters again to everybody who hasn't responded and then there's those that we might not even hear about until the end of the year, till summer, and that just can't be controlled. We do our best to get the information. So with that in mind, Pat then did these numbers on what would be the cost per pupil based on the budget numbers that we have and that she came up with the $4,474 and that is for half of a day of kindergarten. That's based on half of a teacher's salary because the district is required to pay for half of the day. And the full day means we're paying for an extra half. So based on those numbers, that's where she came up with that number of, on the cost per pupil and then the cost at 152 students. If we had 152 students registered, we will probably have more. Excuse me. So then, if we were to go to full day, the cost of that full day, not just the half day, what we pay for a full day, she's doubled the number of, doubled the teacher salary because now you're paying for the full day salaries. What it would cost us is that $1,162,177.
I think that, I think the bottom line for us too right now, and Pat, I feel, please feel free to jump in, is that right now, our kindergarten program is in a deficit regularly. And I know Michelle is here too and thanks Michelle for being here tonight to bring details we need to look up. And if Mary serves me right, we're on a sink this year around $400,000. Is that, is that correct in that, is that right, Mark? Thank you. So I think that that's just one of the things that, you know, when we take a look at, and the other thing we want to bring up here too, and I don't mean to kind of step in, but is we also took a hit of $60,000 loss of grant this year. And so that also is impactful for us. And so that's one of the things, I mean, I'll speak to that again later on, you know, when we talk about loss of revenue for us. So we've got a $400,000 hole, if you will, moving forward and we had this loss of the $60,000. So it's just something to keep in mind when you take a look. Now, the other thing too, at some point in time, you know, we'll want to talk at some point in time, not right now, but a number of school districts across Commonwealth are looking at a free full day, right? And that might be something, not for right now, not for this budget season, we're just not there. It's a big discussion to have. It's a big discussion to have. So we're just looking at this and saying, okay, are these the numbers that we wanna stick with? Do we wanna make a change to it? Where are we at? So, so we just put that on the table for your, your consideration. Jennifer?
Quarter thousand dollar deficit in kindergarten is what it's costing us for the half-day students. So it's not really a deficit, it's, we're obligated to educate for the half-day.
Right. Isn't it, that's what we're, it's costing us, that's right. Yeah, yeah, thank you. It's not, thanks for clarifying that.
Because that made me a little nervous, right? I'm not done.
Keep going, you're on the road.
As far as the full-day students, is what it's costing us for that half-teacher, half-day, is it covering that? Is there...
Yeah, that's the question.
I guess, that's my question. I mean, I know that there are IUP kids who we have to cover no matter what anyways, they, you know.
Right.
Or how close is it, I guess?
At this time, it is not covering.
It's not covering. What's the shortfall?
Um, well, it's about $4,000, $4,300, or $4,400 that we estimate for the cost for the second half of the day, and we're, we're currently at a rate of $3,100.
Okay. So is that why you handed this out?
Yes.
This is a...
This is a comparison of, this is a list of all the school districts around that are similar, that are actually charging for full-day kindergarten, and you can see that there, I've highlighted a couple of, um, school districts that you may think we're similar to, and the rates that they are charging for their full-day kindergarten.
And I don't think that we're looking for a decision tonight, I think we just wanted to lay it out, out tonight, that's all. So, but you gave this to us, and you helped us to understand the shortfall in the current full-day K tuition, because the point is to cover the expense of the full-day K with the tuition, and what you're saying is that it's not covering the expense of the full, so do you have a recommendation?
There's still, there's still a key number that's missing here, and, and that is, how many students, how many students does that, that shortfall apply to?
We need to know, we need to know the, the, the figure, right?
So there's going to be students that have an IUP and so forth. I don't think we're gonna be, we're not gonna be looking for, for other parents to cover the costs.
Right, exactly.
So we need to know how many students are affected by the full day and the shortfall. We have a revenue figure at that point, and we need to meet that, so that's what I'm saying. So that number, I think we still need to, we need to...
So, so we do have some numbers, some projections, based on when the parents have been filling out their applications, and there are about 26 kids that are requesting, 26 parents that are requesting reduced rate, and one IUP so far.
Well, and, um, if you wanna number an educated guess on that, I can give you an educated guess, but it's not gonna be exact. I, I did a little figuring on that. With 26 parents right now requesting either pa- um, partial tuition or no pay, is, so the no pay, I took out the tuition altogether, for, then that left us with, with 16 that were partial. So I don't know whether those parents will pay 25%, 50%, 75%. So I just took the middle figure.
Yeah.
That would be 1,000, 1,550. I, in multiplying that, I figured out we would lose, or it would cost us $55,000 in that sliding scale fee. So then, I said, okay, we have 152 children paying 3,100, take away the 51, 55,000, what we would get for tuition is 416,200. If I took that away from the 679, we'd have a deficit of 263,600.
So, but to Neil's point, that's comparing apples to apples, so the students that wouldn't be, the students that we shouldn't be including in that number, we've taken them out.
Right.
So again, I'm gonna ask, what's your recommendation for bringing all this information forward?
We, 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 we really need to have a full discussion about which way we go. Are we going to increase tuition, and if you're gonna cover it, you're going to increase it a lot, or are we going to work towards free tuition? And I think that's a discussion for, for a lot of people.
So the discussion on free K, I think the superintendent said, we're not having that right now. I mean, that's, that's, that's philosophical, and we have to really dig into that, and right now, we're not gonna be able to get to that, you know, for this year, and I think people understand that. So, is, so we're looking at the FY18 budget, what's your recommendation for all this... Well, sorry, Nicole?
Can, can we, reasonably, I would think that the parents who have their children coming into kindergarten are expecting a $3,100 price tag for it. Have they been told this number already? That, that's...
That's the number with, for, but I, I'm pretty sure, we've always made it clear that that's up to school committee approval.
And it can change at any time.
That could change.
And I don't know that we, again, I don't know that we need to make a decision tonight, that was not, that was not the intent to make a decision tonight, but to lay it on the table and say, we wanna have some discussion about this. Are you even in favor of us looking at a tuition increase? And if you are, then I think that we need to think about what the appetite is and how big that tuition increase is.
And I, I would like something at some point that says, this is the number of kids that pay tuition, and not the free, and not the reduced, and not the IUP kids, and how much they cost, and, because, as you said, we can't have parents paying for a kid because their parents should be, you know, qualified for reduced tuition.
Right.
That's, that's on us, so...
Right.
Okay, so that kind of, those numbers, that kind of thing, I think we need to look at all that.
And the, the 202, is that full, is that, the 202 children? Is that, I mean, that's total, right? So that's part-time and full-time?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to know how many are in the full-time program?
Yeah, we don't know that, yeah.
Okay, but we can base it off of maybe past years.
As they register, they ask to get in.
As they, we ask them, and I know a lot of parents that say, oh, I'm unsure, so I'm, they're just putting down half-time, or that...
So, so for next, um, does anybody have any more questions? Does anybody have to talk about next steps? Mark, do you have a question?
A couple. Can you compare, I said census last year was for 211, and how many actually enrolled in that 211?
Oh, that, yeah, no, we had, actual enrollment was 211.
I see.
And I'd have to go back and find those numbers, that what the census was last year, that I, I don't have, I'm sorry, listen.
And can you give a guess or estimate of how these are in each town, populations that are registered?
Oh, how many, what the numbers are for each town? Oh, you have your towns, yes. Right on the paper, we have 75 from Sawyer, 60 from Mary Rowlinson, and 67 from Centra School. That's what makes up that 202.
So that's the registered so far?
No, those are the, those that are registered so far, 57 from Florence Sawyer, 57 from Mary Rowlinson, and 51 from Center.
Got it.
And this is kind of what hit Florence Sawyer last year, because we talked about reducing ahead for kindergarten, and then we go ahead, and now kindergarten is just way out of whack with the number of kids that they have in the class now, I mean, it's way, way up there.
It's higher than it's...
And we've heard some parents commenting about this. So I think part of that conversation also needs to be, how many people are we gonna put in these classes that we're gonna charge X number of dollars for?
Exactly.
Because if I'm a parent, and I'm going to have 25 kids in a class, and I'm gonna pay this kind of money, we want a little private school in that case, if I'm gonna pay that, you know, I mean, but you know what I'm saying, for, for kindergarten, I mean, you...
So they need to register.
If, if that's a possibility. So obviously, registration helps. I think we need to revise our policy, it tells me on this end, where, where we need to make sure that, maybe we take an annual vote on what the rate is, and that it's understood that when people are actually signing up, because those, those numbers can fluctuate, that once the vote's taken for the budget, that's when the rate will be established, rather than the back end.
So that's a really good point, so Susan?
Yeah, I can find that, I can, I can send that to you.
Because I think that when you send out your next letter, you can say, we determine the number of, opening, you know, another number of classes based on the registration, and if you don't register...
And I have talked to parents that I knew didn't answer, and that we have, like in our preschool, I gone and talked to them and told them exactly that. That could increase our numbers in the classroom, when all of a sudden you've signed it in, and the school committee has set this budget.
Right.
Right. So, just a second. No, I was just gonna wrap up, actually, so... So was I.
I have a possibly quick one. So in terms of capacity in each of the towns, how, how are you set in terms of staff as well as classrooms?
Good question.
Well, right now, we have 10 classrooms across the district, and 202 would be perfect for that, keeping on numbers to approximately 20 children a classroom, there'd be a couple with 21. So, it looks like we'd have the same number of teachers, if that all is what happens.
So, we need to talk about next steps on this, because I think there's more discussion that needs to happen, and you're gonna pull some numbers together for us based on what Jennifer and Neil suggested, then this needs to come back up at, at the next meeting, that we have discussion on the budget, because we need that information in order to hear what your recommendation is. I would assume that you're putting the numbers together to make a recommendation to increase... Yes, I'm thinking right now. That's what I'm, I'm looking for, is, we're not gonna tell you to increase it, you're gonna tell us you're recommending that you increase it, so that's what I'm looking for here. I think tonight was just a, a case of putting the awareness on the table, saying this is where we'd like to move to. So the next meeting, then?
Yep.
You come back and, okay. With some specifics, thank you. Thanks. Thanks very much, Cindy, I appreciate it. Thanks, Pat.
That was good.
Uh, we're gonna move from there to special education, and we're gonna ask Joan DeAngelis to come forward, and, and I think, Joan, we're, we're kind of looking for a bit of an overview on the two new programs that you're kind of looking for, and, and maybe if you can just update us a little bit, that'd be great.
Sure. So when I came on Saturday, I talked about two programs. When I met the elementary principals several times, we find that we have some similar populations that we would like to service kids in a different way through, through programs. So we have a RISE program at our middle school, and we have S and three at the high school, and that's for students with social-emotional needs, and we're really finding that's a missing element at the elementary school, that we really don't have a program for students with social-emotional concerns. When we looked at numbers across the district, you know, the principals were able to initially identify nine students that they were really concerned about, and I said, that's much too high, and we really wanted to focus the program between grades two to five. So when we look at the numbers now, there were about seven, six or seven students that we think that would really benefit from a holistic therapeutic program. And while I think we're doing good work at each of the schools, I think we could look at it more holistically and provide some programming, because anytime you build a program, we should always be thinking about less restricted environment. And we have kids that are supported by some adults in the building, but what we wanna do through a program is really build students' independence. So instead of having an adult with them, we wanna build things programmatically, so they get therapeutic components where they're getting support from adults, but we're building their capacity to be independent in an inclusion setting going forward. So that's the early Riser program that I talked about last time I was here. The other group population is a little bit smaller, we have four or five students that we find have neurological or autism at the elementary level, that also, we support them through paraprofessionals in the district. We're thinking really having some social skills, class support, direct instructions, some inclusion opportunities, some co-teaching, and again, building for capacity, because once kids get to middle school, they have to move from class to class and develop teacher-to-teacher relationships. So when we look at programming, we wanna really think about, how do we build kids' social connections, relationships with teachers, social skills, academic supports, to really help them when they get to the middle school setting, because then, we're moving every 45 minutes. And we found that that transition can be really difficult for students, so really building capacity for those students to be successful as they move on to the middle school.
I think that these programs are so exciting to me, that, that, just, just building in the programmatic, and the focus is the, the independence, that plus the literacy, I really hope that people are getting an opportunity to see some of the really good stuff that's going on here. And even to Cindy's, you know, Cindy, hi Cindy, with, with the K, I mean, there's a discussion out there to be had about eventually, possibly, free full. It doesn't mean we're not doing, doesn't mean we are doing, it's on the radar, we're gonna have the discussions, but, like, things are happening, so we just have to figure out how much it's gonna cost, but I love what you're talking about.
So in the budget, I did ask for two teachers and a .8 school adjustment counselor. And in terms of the paraprofessional support, I feel like with the paraprofessionals we have in the district, we can use those paraprofessionals to support the district-based programs.
Neil?
I, I just have a, that sounds great on that old side, and, and kudos. I'm gonna go back to the Student DeMerson study, the Student Risk Survey, because I know what you're talking about on the social-emotional aspect, but I think that there's a social-emotional component that we need to be addressing on the general student body, just based on some of the really kind of scary stuff that we saw, that maybe they're not following under your veil of whip, but, I mean, is, I would love to see that kind of comprehension brought, and this is just me speaking, but I'd love to see that kind of comprehension brought forward to the general population, which seems to really need this.
I agree. I am gonna speak to it tonight, that very, very piece, in my, in my update.
Donna Lindstrom and I work very closely in concert around student concerns when it comes up for all the population in the district.
Any other questions? Actually, may I just, I, I'll just take a second right now. What I'm gonna present to you tonight is that I've put a, a separate line in there for $10,000 to go after this. We've got some, Donna and I have done some, I think, some creative thinking, I know that Joan's been involved with the conversations as well, and I think you're, you're gonna see, you'll see Donna come back in April with a mapped-out plan. So the ask is, the two teachers and a .8 parent?
No, school adjustment counselor.
A school adjustment counselor. And you'll, tonight you'll hear that I will, I will strongly promote that, encourage the...
With a negative to it.
Yes, it's in there.
It's in there, yes. I brought sample draft proposals of descriptions, and I have to tell you, the elementary principals have been wonderful to work with and very open to having new programs in their building, so...
Any further questions? Sorry, Susan?
This, this might be way, way, way too, too much of an answer for you to give, but I'm kind of curious what programming is in place for that population now? Is it, are they full inclusion, you said with the one-on-one, or is it...
So it really is diversified, so we have BCBAs in the district that work in all of our schools, but I think all the schools are servicing populations like this, so I think I'd like to bring a focused program together so that, you know, we have some real focus support for students. So we have some powers, you know, providing support, we have BCBAs that are providing behavior plans and Chico cards and all of those things, so I think we had a comprehensive approach, it would be better for students and schools, so we didn't have people moving from district to district, we had like a holistic...
So these people would have essentially like a separate classroom where the kids would go, and they'd learn these skills, and then...
There would be a home base. RISE has got a home base, but obviously, as much inclusion opportunities as they can manage. And I think it has to be individualized for, for every student.
So this could help stabilize...
My, my goal is to avoid out-of-district placements by having this program, and I think that sometimes when we're looking for students that need assessment, it's in these two areas where they need support, so it'd be great to have programs to really support these students in districts.
And Joan, you know what, that, one, I wanna piggyback so you get this information, 'cause Joan and Brooke and I had a conversation a couple of weeks ago, and you said something to me that really made sense, and I'm not gonna do it justice, so I'm gonna start to lead it, and then I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Okay.
But you said something about sometimes, sometime, you know, and I think everybody here would agree, that if a student needs a different program, and that's really what the student... that if a student needs a different program, and that's really what the student needs, you get the student what they need. But you also said, sometimes if it's a short-term thing, then you're not really doing the student favors because they come back and they've lost that ground. And we've got, so why don't you speak to that?
So, we have really rich academic opportunities in the district. And sometimes when we send kids out for these kinds of supports that need assessment, their focus is on what are the social emotional issues? And then, there is gaps academically because that doesn't become the primary focus anymore. It's how can we get the student's social emotional stabilized in order to get them to access an academic? So, we do see it's more difficult to get them back in district over time because then those gaps exist. We're focusing on this, but we're not allowing the academic rigor. So, I think having it in a regular ed setting, we have lots of opportunities. So, if you came into our, like our social emotional high school program, those students are really getting academic rigor. We have regular ed teachers that come into a student, students are going out. So, we're not creating that academic gap that can be created by them not being in the rich academic setting.
Okay, Lynn.
And I've gone through the social emotional group that they're starting up, so we're to that finish. And what I found really interesting was they said, it is not methadone, it's not drugs. It's something to, they actually separated it, which I was kind of surprised.
Okay, any further questions?
That was good. Thank you.
Great. Thanks Joan, appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
Thanks Cindy.
Thank you.
Moving forward, another program that you wanted to take a little bit deeper look at, particularly with regards to tuition and such, was the Extended Day Enrichment. So, Laura, I'm gonna ask you to come forward, Laura Dwyer. And Pat, Pat's gonna join us as well. So, Laura, thanks for coming tonight. And let's just do a bit of a brief overview again and kind of tee it up for you. So, do you mind just kind of reviewing some things that we did on Saturday?
We talked about some of the program and I did, I'll just give you a little summary. The Extended Learning Program strives to create a happy environment that meets the social, emotional, academic, artistic, growth motor stem, which we know assigns technology and to the needs of its students. This is achieved through community service projects, leadership opportunities, enrichment classes, and interest-driven activities. So, that's our mission at Extended Learning. Of course, the program is tuition-based and we are at three locations. I'm here, because I touched on last week, to talk about a tuition increase. The program, the Extended Learning Program daily rate is currently thirteen eighty. Child services will reimburse for a daily rate of fourteen per day or higher. Currently, we're not eligible for reimbursement because we are at twenty cents below the eligibility level. Additionally, we are below the average rate per day of existing programs in the surrounding areas. And you asked, Lorraine, what those surrounding areas are?
No, I'm just listening, actually. I have no questions yet.
Okay, all right, I got it. Well, I have it anyways. The master's general school cost range is fifteen to twenty dollars a day in our area. Some of the dealer rates nearby is Westford's twenty-seven fifty, Acton Boxborough is twenty-one seventy-five, Mowbroe is twenty-one seventy-five, and Leamester is eighteen eighty.
And we're what?
We are at thirteen dollars and eighty cents per day. Wait, I got something better. Okay, I would like to propose an increase to fifteen dollars and twenty-five cent per day from the thirteen dollars and eighty cents per day current rate. This increase will result in a dollar forty increase per day per student. The tuition has not been, has not seen an increase since, for the past two years. In two thousand thirteen, in two thousand fourteen, the second year of the year, we increased the tuition by twenty dollars a year, which resulted in a ten cent per day student increase. That being said. So, the program has grown tremendously from when I started. When I started here, there was, there was no website. I have linked, I have a company I could share with you guys too, if you haven't visited my website, Extended Learning website. It's, I can just give you a quick peek.
You know what, if you tell us the URL, we can just jump on it.
Oh, I was gonna say, because here it is. And I'm like, you can't see that. If you go to Nishober's website, it's in, on the left side, there's the, there's the green bars and it says Extended Learning. If you just click that on, it goes right to it. So, the program's expanded. When I first came here, it was a, one, it was a paragraph on the website and it wasn't on the homepage. It was like you had to go to families and you had to link it to this, so it was very difficult, convoluted to even find. There was, nothing was computer-based, there was zero enrichment opportunities being offered. It was more of a, which served the need at the time. It was more of a daycare. I mean, it's, when I came, it was a hundred and forty students. Currently, we have four hundred and sixty, if you include my outsourced enrichment students also. So, that's quite an increase.
So, a hundred and forty students to four hundred and sixty.
Four years. It wasn't overnight, yeah.
Is this, so, so I'm gonna show my ignorance and Neil and Mark and Pat are gonna correct me. So, when we went through the Florence Goddard, and I know that you spent time with John, so I appreciate that. What, so this is one of those accounts that should be self-funded?
Right.
So, I need to get, I need fifty thousand foot. So, I need to understand what's our deficit right now in the self-funding? But we have to go through the same exercise Neil suggested for the K, you have to take the kids out, that.
Right. But one of the things that we don't, we don't recover by running this program is the cost of keeping the buildings, you know, later, of keeping the kids in the building later during the day. And in the past, we've used an offset in the budget, you know, up as high as two hundred thousand dollars, which is, I don't think that that is something that we wanna do for the future. But if we could come up with a more realistic cost as to what it's costing to keep the buildings open, you know, as far as custodial costs, because there's additional cleaning that has to take place in the buildings. The lights are on, the heat's up. So, I think that that's, by increasing the tuition, we'll be able to recover some of that. And you're proposing an increase that I think will probably yield about ninety thousand dollars based on the existing students. But again, we could go back and do the calculation to segregate the kids that are not full pay and find out what the cost is so that they're, they're not, you know, the other kids aren't absorbing the cost of the kids that can't pay full tuition, so.
That's, we have a minimal amount of students too, who are, and in the past, I only had two students that were at zero pay and everyone else was reimbursed by voucher. That has ceased because I'm below.
So, so I think it would be helpful to see that schedule, and thank you for the data. The schedule of, you know, what the cost is. And sometimes it's kind of not fair to say, well, it's our cost. Well, are your costs low enough that I should be reimbursing them? But within the context of what the other, and you have a rich program, but within the context of the other districts around us, we need to just see that on paper because I think we're gonna have to have some discussion about that. But if these programs need to, if we're, if we're, we have a two hundred thousand dollar shortfall and it's not, it's not even kindergarten, we just need to see what that is gonna look like.
Well, I just want to clarify, the two hundred thousand dollars was not necessarily a shortfall. It was used as a funding source.
Right.
A revenue source.
From the general budget.
Right. And because over the years, there have been some funds that were built up in the revolving fund and that was an effort to bring that.
So, but it's taxing the general budget for a two hundred thousand dollars worth of.
Other direction. It's money's coming to the general budget from the Extended Days.
Yes, because it's a revenue source.
Yeah, so we need to balance it.
So, really, to bring, to bring the program into balance, I mean, like an enterprise fund, like that you hear about enterprise funds, like municipal, like companies or whatever. If you want it to be able to operate independently, so if we quit the program tomorrow, we would actually probably save money by, you know, not doing that. But that's not what we're, that's not what we wanna do. We wanna just make sure that we're absorbing the cost too of having these buildings open till six o'clock at night and staffing them and.
Right, the all-in cost to support the program and the tuition needs to offset it.
Exactly.
And the increase is also due to, it revolves around the increase in the program. The increase in your program size, I mean, I have forty staff now, when I started, I had twenty. So, I mean, it, even my morning program, so that generates, you know, more time, more supplies, more staff, more benefits, more. So, that, I think, your tuition increase, I think, also was reflected from that.
So, that would be helpful, that be helpful for you guys?
Well, we need to know, like, what true costs are at this point. So, define true costs, including, I think, and Mark, if you have any, including the breakdown between, and Jeff could probably help with that, I imagine, but breaking down janitorial costs, heat, electricity and so forth. And then, I mean, the goal, I think, is to look for true revenue neutrality as far as, as far as that program goes. And that's why knowing the true costs are important. The other thing is, we have a surplus, where's our, how's our surplus stand in relation to, like, does DESI oversee the surpluses for this? Like they do for like food services? Okay, because that's, we've had a substantial surplus in that, so we need to kind of figure out what happens there too with that surplus and how that works. So, if, and there are different ways, obviously, you can use it for your initiatives or if we are going to raise rates, we can maybe tap into that surplus and offset, let's not use that, but use that to subsidize or step into a program over a couple, I don't know, but I mean, that's a discussion.
So, that's the next.
And I know that Mr. Garcia was out of the room when you gave those rates. Can you just reiterate those rates in the surrounding areas form, the twenty, the twenty and eighteen dollar rates?
The master's average school cost range was fifteen to twenty per day per student. Some of the nearby towns we found, we, I just referenced a few of them. Westford was twenty-seven fifty, Acton Boxborough was twenty-one seventy-five, Mowbroe was twenty-one seventy-five, and Leamester was, Leamester was higher, eighteen eighty.
And we were?
We're.
And we're thirteen eighty. It's a magic number.
So, for next steps on this, are you thinking that we'll come back to the true costs for next time?
I think our next meeting, yeah, it's gonna be the kindergarten tuition review, extended day tuition review. And I think that's what we call them.
Sounds great.
So, I have, I have census numbers again. How many people are in each town that are participating in the program? How many kids?
I was gonna say Leamester, but that's not, Lancaster, Leamester took my time. Lancaster's sixty, right around sixty to sixty-four. Stowe's a hundred and twenty and Bolton is sixty-seven. And before school, you have thirty in Stowe, you have fourteen in Lancaster, and you have twenty, close to twenty-two in Bolton, which is an increase in all sites from, before school program's only in the second year. So, that's, I mean, Lancaster only had five. It was very.
So, actually, that's like, my question, because you mentioned you were thinking about morning programs starting early.
I would, I will survey to back my, what I have, you know, verbally received from parents. But there has been a large request to move the program earlier. What I would propose is maybe just starting maybe half an hour early, pilot that, see how that goes. Because that will impact my staffing, so I don't wanna.
That might offset the additional.
And my numbers, right.
So, right, so I got two questions on that. So, are we going by per morning, are we going by per hour? So, if we make it earlier, do you know what I mean, so if we're adding more hours to this, at this point in time?
It would be per morning, so instead of seven twenty-five, I'd like, actually just let them up to seven.
So, we'd have to look into what the cost would be for that extra hour to attend at first point, right?
Right. And if we just did that little bit, my staff would pretty much be able to stay as long as they could do themselves. I would have to, you know, look for more staff.
Could you also talk about where you are as far as capacity goes for the three towns?
Full, a little bit of space in Lancaster. Lancaster's population requires a little bit of extra staffing because I have a lot of challenges there with behavior. So, even though it's, the numbers are, I mean, on a given day, I mean, sixty, those are my total numbers. That's not on a given day. Like, I don't have a hundred and twenty in Stowe every day, that's my total numbers. And Lancaster, she might have, I think forty-five is her highest total on a given day. But the population requires a little bit extra because we have some kids coming who have one-on-ones in the day. We're trying to, you know, transition them in, but still providing a little extra support.
So, Laura, that's good, that's actually, I'm glad you asked that question. So, we don't really have a whole lot of space.
No.
So, is there any, there's no way to find more space if the demand is high?
Well, I have a little idea for next year.
Do you wanna talk to Brooke about it first?
I think that's the wrong description. I think putting out for the purposes of tonight, we wanted to bring up the tuition.
Okay, but I do have a point.
We're talking budget.
Okay, so I just wanted to ask on the capacity issue. So, Stowe's at one twenty, Lancaster, Bolton are essentially like sixty-seven. So, they have no, no further ability to grow. Are we turning people away from those two towns at this point?
We're not turning people away from Bolton and Lancaster. So, I'm really cautious, like, if somebody leaves and, you know, it kind of works out that sometimes when somebody wanna come in, somebody has left. So, that's how I do, how I move it in Stowe. I don't advertise that we're open because I don't have that ability. And I kind of do that on all the programs because I don't wanna leave it as we're open because then I can get a flood. So, people will email me, I'll check it out, you know, and I'll move them in as they move out.
So, if we did see an influx in Bolton or Lancaster, then we'd find capacity some way, just, and I'm just going that whole fancy parenting route.
That would have to be another one of my creative ideas.
All right.
I'm not saying it could be not.
Now, if in Lancaster, you have people that require additional services, can you charge for that? Because this is not a required thing.
It's more of an extra, I mean, I do staff in Lancaster. I have two, a few staff members who are trained in, you know, they are one-on-one instructional assistants in the day. And I do have that extra special ed background. And they're part of the general population. I do staff an extra, like, high school student and maybe an extra person too for, just for the general eyes on for all of it. But that is key, that I have those two specials over there. They're really, I mean, they don't act as a one-on-one, but they do, they model those special techniques that my staff needs.
I just wanna wrap up because I may be still facilities and I still have my report to give, so. Laura, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
All right, thank you, thanks so much.
Thanks Pat. Pat, you're probably gonna stay there and Jeff's coming up. Thank you Laura.
Thank you.
Jeff Converse is back to visit us again and we're gonna talk about facilities. So, Pat, did you wanna tee this up for Jeff?
Well, I think that Jeff has a budget here that reflects what we need and exactly just what we need. And it's been trimmed back a little bit in the last few days. And I would say probably to as low as it could possibly go. And he's gonna talk a little bit about that and what he's doing at each of the schools and how his budget is drafted.
And Jeff, can you also, that you know, are you gonna cover the, why did I just forget the word? The capital expense for each town?
We're working on that.
Yeah, they'll talk about that though. Actually, Pat can fill you in on that. And I wanna go back after what Pat said because, again, you knew that that budget was gonna have to change from Saturday to where we sit tonight, and it's still gonna change further, probably between now and Friday. We're hoping to have some things wrapped up by Friday, but we've had to make more cuts, clearly. I mean, we couldn't go forward with the budget that we presented with the amount, with the percentage that we had the other day. So, Jeff's area was one of the areas that took some, some pretty big hits. It wasn't the only area that took some big hits, but it did. So, I do agree with Pat, I think we're probably just about as low as we can go. So, I say that to help support you, Jeff. We keep asking you to do stuff, you know, a dollar for a dime, you know?
Yeah, yeah, it's, so, like I said the other day, really, my whole initiative here, coming in, I started in August. And, you know, there's, the school year has an ebb and flow sort of, right? You have the summer, then you have the school starting, then you have the holidays, and now we're going into the spring season and then it's the summer again. So, there's a lot to it. And, you know, like I said, a lot of my, the way I'm trying to format, the way I look at how we're going to take care of the needs of these buildings is, you know, try to put together some sort of standardized schedule for maintenance programs. is, you know, try to put together some sort of standardized schedule for maintenance programs, preventative maintenance programs, which don't exist right now, um, really update our inspections and our compliance, which don't really exist right, right now, we just started to get all those, uh, we've done a lot as far as getting those up into compliance, um, you know, we've worked on custodial programs, I know that even yourselves have been involved in, in helping with that, um, we had, we're working on security upgrades, roofing repairs, and upgrades in existing equipment that run the school, whether it be pumps, or sewer systems, or boilers, or tanks, or oil, uh, you know, burners or anything, so that's really where, when I created the budget, talking with Pat, that's really where a lot of the effort was, was centered, right, just trying to take what we already have, we level funded a lot of the things that have, a lot of the items that here, that you're gonna see in the budget, that are just, you know, they might be FY seventeen, and we're moving over FY eighteen, because, you know, those are the prices that were trending, that's how the budget was created before, so, you know, without seeing any reason, we're not coming in at, at any sort of, uh, we're not coming in under, under budget, the money's there, and, and I, and I think they're fair numbers. We can run, we can walk through numbers, if you have any questions on specific areas, um.
I don't think we need that kind of detail, though, Jeff, thank you, though.
If there's anything specific you wanna ask me about, we can talk about that.
Yeah, I think it's probably more that they probably have some, some questions, and before you, before you go to the questions, just touch base on the capital plan, uh, maybe, Pat, just, uh, between the two of you, you can just speak to the capital plan that I know that you're working on right now, and I know that you've got a timeline coming up that you're trying to make, tune on that.
Yes, I do have a timeline, and, um, the capital plan is, I, I hope to have it ready by Friday, and, and what I have is, um, I have a couple of issues in, in Stowe that I've already, um, mentioned to, um, the town manager, you know, he had, wanted a heads up on a couple of things, if we were thinking of anything, and, um, I've already given him a little bit of information, we've been working with Harold.
Yes.
And he's been, he's helping us to get together some, um, information on issues in Bolton, um, relating to roofs, and, um, some boilers at the Sawyer School, that some of them are working and some of them aren't, and, you know, what they're, wanna do with that for next year, and, and Lancaster, we've, um, we've addressed the, um, we're, we're going to present the, the fact that there's a water problem, or a moisture issue, and quite frankly, it's, we spent a lot of money over a lot of years, and, um, at this point, we think it's maybe time for the town to take it and do something different with it, um, ten thousand dollars has been spent over the last, what, five, six years, just on testing, with, there isn't any mold there, so it, it needs, something needs to be done with it, but, um, we don't know what, and nobody seems to be able to tell us exactly what needs to be done, so we're going to put that, a number in there for that, and see if they can address that, and also, um, the one other thing that we were going to put on the list was the, um, the box, uh, the walk-in freezer, cooler, the unit itself is, um, spongy, the floor's a spongy, moisture is in between the walls, and that's basically what we're gonna present forward for Lancaster, so.
For FY eighteen?
For, uh, uh, yeah, for eighteen, understand, we'll put it forward and leave it up to you whether or not we, you have the resources to do that, so, um.
I think it's just a case of putting these things on the radar, to be honest with you, I don't think we have any real preconceived notions.
Well, but if it's recommendations, you gotta learn about the recommendations, right?
Oh, yeah.
So, the, uh, question I have for you is, the facility treatment, the treatment facility up at the high school.
Yes.
So when we met that Saturday, we didn't have a number yet, do we have a number on that, because we own that, right?
Right.
Yeah, for the leach field?
Yeah.
We have, well.
The engineering component is the only thing that we would have, is a, a, a potential of, but that has to go out to bid, correct me if I'm wrong, right?
That will have to go out to bid, so we don't, we don't even know what possible.
And when does that have to be done, I mean, genuinely need to be done?
Well, the state gave us the two years, but we're, we're, we, the engineering report's gonna tell us what we can do, and then, once we know what we can do, we have to figure out who does that, and how much it costs to do it, right now, it, it, we, like we had said the other day, it could be build a new leach field over the soccer field, or it might be just add a piece of equipment to the existing structure in the, um, treatment plant, so, that's kind of what the engineering.
Plus, we have the whole question on the, the, the high school facility itself.
And that's really what's helped us get a little bit more, when we went and we met with them, we said, you know, I'm new, we have a lot, we have a lot of moving pieces right now in the community, uh, three towns working together for a common goal, and, and when they heard us saying that, they, they reacted very positive, oh, we didn't know you were putting, you were considering putting in a new school, so that changes their perspective on what we're gonna do, if they thought we were gonna stay there long-term, then they would say, yeah, your flow rate's four days to get to this well, you have to do something now, whereas they know, they don't wanna spend your money for something you're gonna wanna rip up in three years, two, three years, so, they're very, they're very receptive.
And we're hoping to come up with a new timeline for that, too, when we get our engineering.
Okay.
They're doing that now, the engine report, the engineering report's getting done right now.
Okay. And we've, and we've sent a letter, we submitted a letter to them, letting them know that we have contracted with an engineer for the study, and that we will keep them up to date on what we find and what we plan to do.
So you think that by Friday, you'll have some of these additional numbers?
If, with this, I don't think, well, no, no, Friday is not the leach field, Friday is just a capital plan, the capital plan.
Right, right. Well, I'm sorry, I switched gears on you without telling you what the topic was, but I know that the towns are trying to put their budgets together, so that's why.
I will have a document for them by the end of the week.
So, and I'm, the school committee later on tonight, I'm gonna ask you about, oh, gosh, adding a meeting, but, um, uh, um, I'm just, I don't wanna get killed here, but, um, we can talk about that later.
I'm leaving before.
I know, she's gonna be gone, so.
I, I have two.
Yeah, I, I wanna go to Aruba, it's not gonna happen, but anyway, does anybody else have questions for Jeff? Neil, sorry.
I've actually got, I've got a few, um, first of all, I just wanna piggyback off the, uh, the leach field thing, so when we get this engineering report, can we get some definitive clarification as to whether we can, if we have to do a new leach field, um, prior to, let's say that we're doing a rebuild, um, or, uh, that we're just going to kick the can down the road, handle the critical items with an intent of doing something in a couple of years or something, can we tap into that same leach field for, let's say, a new building, if it turned out to be that way, or do we have to reconstruct the entire thing all over again?
That's a good question, and it was asked, we asked that, and me, that was one of the questions I asked, they, they, a leach field or where we don't have town set, we're going to have to have some sort of a leach system.
Right.
That, the size of that is dependent upon what's being, and that was one of their main concerns, too, when, when we said, well, if, what happens if, because, you know, they, they have a, um, they have a schematic with the location and the distance of the flow rate, and we could say, oh, well, that area right there, next to the tennis court, isn't in that circle, we put it there, they were very quick to say, we wouldn't want you to put it there, and then tell us you're building a new school, then we change the parameters of your, your leach field, and now that is no longer, it's brand new, it's obsolete, so they were very quick to, to let us know that, don't, don't make any decisions until, you know, you have a, a really a good idea of what you're gonna do.
So the key thing would be, though, if we kick the can down the road, but we do need to replace the leach fields prior to, let's say, we do go to the building room, we don't wanna do that new leach field, look at into the existing high school, and then, say, two years after that, we wanna build a school, and then have to throw away a quarter million dollar leach field, so I, I guess that's the thing, is can we make sure that we're able to actually tap into that, maybe you can't, I mean, there may be like DER regulations or something that says you can't do that, but I think that's something for us to know when we're making some decisions here on, you know, MSBA and all this other stuff, what's the true cost, again, of maintaining versus moving forward?
That was one of the biggest concerns when we met with them, was to make sure that they were clear that we had, you know, things going on, and, uh, they seemed to react to us that the two years that they've given us is, it's that date that, to let us know that they're serious, and they're gonna impose financial penalties on us if we're not in compliance with them, um, when we told them that we were gonna be looking at engineering reports and, and talking about new schools, they, they seemed to imply, I think they actually said, that if we see you're making progress towards a new school, we would let, because the, 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 the water's not contaminated, and the leach field is not, there's nothing wrong, so if there was health-related issues, I think that they would be more, but they.
Different perspective.
They seemed to be very receptive that if we go and we speak with MSBA, and we are notifying them that we have progress, and that we have these plans, they, um, that two years will get, will gradually go with us, so that, that's how it seemed to work that day.
Thank you, my only one question that I have, um, pertaining this, is, um, now, you, you said you're deferring some maintenance, I think you were moving some things that would go from FY eighteen down to FY nineteen or something, did I misunderstand?
I don't think so.
Cause I just, I, you know, obviously, we're coming off of a, a record of deferred maintenance.
Yep.
And I'm really of the stitch and time approach, um, where if we have to do a little bit of maintenance here on the front end, it's gonna save us a boatload in the, in the back, so my thing is, if, if you're saying something needs to be done, it needs to be done, so there's no opportunity to defer, because then it never really needed to be done, if you know what I'm saying?
Right.
And that's just my philosophical approach, how are you taking this approach as you're cutting your budget?
You know, I'm, I'm still learning a lot about your buildings, every season, and, um, so I, I, you know, my budget has been diced and sliced and looked at every way we possibly can, there's the things that you, that any building needs to have being done, in order if you wanna maintain it properly, and then there's the, um, you know, I think this should, same with the capital budget, i- if I was to go to every building with a pad of paper, I could come up with millions of dollars to spend on your buildings, and if you want me to do that, I will, sixty-six thousand dollars to repoint your, your, your schools in Stowe, I mean, all these brick buildings, they all need to be repointed, there's a limit to what you really wanna do, so what I'm trying to do is make sure that they're weather tight, the heating system works well, they're in compliance, the elevators are all compliant, so there's the basics, that's what I'm trying to take care of, and then, we might have floor repairs in high school that might be trip hazards, that, you'll see that in the flooring budget, the staircase, staircases that aren't, that are rickety, that I think they should be fixed for compliance, a lot of my focus is on the things to make the buildings safe, clean, organized.
Do the new security components that Donna Lindstrom talked about show up in Jeff's budget?
There's a, there is a little section that you'll, you'll see in there, actually, if you look in the budget, I think it even says safety, does it not?
Yeah.
And I'm just gonna say, for, uh, cause it's me, um, what Jeff just said, I think is really important, that when the budget's being discussed, the towns and so forth, that the approach that Jeff has taken is fully explained so people understand.
Yeah.
Because I think that's really critical, because when you still look at facilities dollars, there's gonna be a lot of dollars there, and people are gonna ask, what, what the heck, and I think what you just described is something that's, that's very key for people to understand, you could spend, and the, the example of the pointing and so forth, I, I, to me, that, I think that will go a long way to, to demonstrating the triaging, I guess.
Yeah, well, I think, honestly, Jeff, I give you a ten out of ten for just articulating, articulating, I think, exactly, exactly.
I give all credit to Pat. Patient with me.
But I think you did a great job, I mean, we're looking for safe buildings, we're looking for things that are in compliance, they've gotta be warm, they've gotta, you know, you said exactly what we, what we believe, so I, I think, I think you just did a, a great job just now.
Wonderful, any other questions for Jeff, and if not, we're gonna let that man go home. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thanks, Jeff.
Alrights, so I think, um, now Superintendent Clench is going to share with us the next iteration of some of the work that she and Pat have done on the budget.
Thank you, so I'm gonna, going to go through a bit of an update, we've got, of course, we've got more trees we're handing out here, so I'm gonna just pass this out if I can, and I'm gonna speak to it all. So, a couple of quick things that I, I'm gonna start with, and I'm gonna try to, um, pull this all together, if you take a look at the new staff request, now, if you brought your binder, that's awesome, and you can kind of compare some things, uh, to what you received on, on Saturday, so I'm gonna start with the new staff request, so you can see how this is kind of, thank you, pulled, pulled together, these, you had asked, um, for my recommendations moving forward of the items that were presented the other day, and I went back and had further discussions, again, clearly, we said Saturday morning, and I say again tonight, this is the next evolution of the budget, this is where it sits tonight, moving forward, we expect that it will change, but yet, again, um, so that was one of the reasons why we did not promote that these numbers go out to our towns, or to our town administrators, uh, and I'd had that same conversation with Ann, uh, you know, with regards to reporting in the newspaper and such, this is just a work in progress, and this is where it sits right now, that's where we sit again tonight, so we went back, and the staff request that we originally had, um, i- i- if you recall, basically, the bottom line amounted to eight hundred and fifty thousand, uh, in the, the Saturday, um, iteration that you had, this is not saying, and, and I would also say too, this is not, and never has been, about a wish list, these staffing requests, the requests that came through from the principals, none of it was about a wish list, it's just that, in a perfect world, if we could have exactly what we need to really run the district well and propel it, this is what we'd like to do, the reality check is that we don't have that kind of money, so it's not, not that these were wish list items, it's just that these were items that we would like to have had, but unfortunately, right now, with the fiscal environment that it is, we can't have, so I met with different staff members, I met with principals, we went back and took a quick peek, and you'll see that what I'm presenting tonight, if you take a look at the bottom line, tonight is two hundred and thirty thousand versus the eight hundred and fifty thousand that you had on Saturday, so that means that we pulled a lot of stuff off of here, um, I'm gonna go through and just speak a little bit to the, the items that are really on here versus what's off, and if there's anything that's off that you've got questions about, don't hesitate to ask, I'm gonna focus on what's on, if you take a look down at the bottom of the page, you see Sped, I feel very strongly that Joan uh, receives the necessary support fiscally to implement those two new programs, and so I've done absolutely no cuts in her budget area at all, and so if you take a look at what she's asked for, there is exactly what I'm, uh, advocating for as we move forward. On the, uh, next page, if you turn the page, uh, over, the new staff request, the athletic administrative assistant is something that had come up, and as, uh, Pat and I talked about it, we felt that that cost, I feel strongly that the position be there, because right now, Tanya Rich is doing all of the accounting for that, as well as the AD, and it kind of is not a lot dissimilar to where we had with Laura O'Dwyer, Laura Dwyer and Tom Poole, doing all the accounting for extended day in food services, when that's not their area, we feel that the, the cost, you can see that there's a zero dollar in there, we feel that that cost can be picked up by the athletic revolving one of those accounts, and so we feel that that can be, I'm gonna use the word offset, but we feel that that can be offset, but I am encouraging that we do that, because it's a whole in the process.
But this, I'm gonna stop you for a second, sorry, this, this is not just tracking the fees, this is an administrative assistant, right?
We see it more from the lens of an account, uh, an accounting lens, to be honest with you, we're not seeing that this is somebody that's answering the phone, and, 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 that's not what we see, and it's only a part-time position, so we see it more about helping to do scheduling, helping to do the accounting, helping to, uh, track fees, billing.
So does this person work in Pat's organization?
I don't know that we've established where the person would work, I don't think that we've got that far, to be honest with you, we're just saying, we see the need and the rationale for having somebody in that position.
It's offset.
Yeah, guidance counselor at the high school, of the high school position. Guidance counselor at the high school, of the high school positions, this is really the position that I feel that they need the most for a variety of reasons. Central School, when I talked to Ross again, I said, is this really a position you strongly feel that you need? He didn't ask for much, and Pat and I've had this discussion, and Pat says they really do need this person over there. So I've left that position on. Now, remember, these can change. Like, if you feel that you're not comfortable, you don't want to support, this is what I'm putting forward this evening. Over the page, at Hale School, in talking to some of the folks over there, they felt that these particular positions would help best for scheduling and providing the greatest amount of bang for the buck, so to speak. So I kept those positions, but you'll notice that the other positions have been removed from Hale.
Oh, sir.
Absolutely.
Next year's sixth grade class is going to be a hundred and seventh, according to this. And the eighth grade class is still going to be a hundred and fourteen. There's going to be two really large grades at Hale. But it looks like there are five homeroom sections for this current seventh grade class, four for the sixth grade class. How is this incoming class, are they getting another homeroom room?
Honestly, that was not presented to us at all as an issue, but I'm happy to go back after that and take a look at it, Nicole.
I would appreciate that.
Yeah, I definitely will. But it did not come in at all as any type of priority or request. I spoke with Sean O'Shea with regards to the interventionist position at Rolinson. He asked that, could we leave that in until the bitter end? If we felt that we couldn't afford it, then we would, he would forego it, but he would really appreciate having that position made to one FTE.
And, sorry, I was also going to ask about the fifth grade teacher. I know I wasn't here.
That was a wash.
Okay.
Yeah, we're good.
I wasn't here, yes.
Yeah, that's okay.
But I thought it was priority one, so I thought, why is that?
Because basically, he wanted to make sure that what didn't disappear.
Sure.
That's exactly right. Talking to Joel Bates, the fourth grade teacher, for him was the highest priority. And this is one of those cases exactly where not having that class size policy helps to support this right now. Because it doesn't, this is not a group that has reached a tipping point in terms of sheer numbers, but in terms of needs. And so he feels very strongly that we need to add an additional teacher to this particular classroom or class grade for next year. And so.
Because of the makeup of the student body?
The makeup of the group.
So is this the teacher that's going to then we need next year in fifth grade?
We did have some of that discussion, but I, I'm not sure. Again, with the ebb and flow of the students, we're not sure where it's going to be. So I, we did have the discussion, but we didn't land anywhere on that.
Okay.
Okay, so ultimately, right now, this sits at two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, right now. So then what we did was we took a look and we said, okay, so I'm going to ask you to start to take a look at the executive summary that you've got, but I'm going to kind of go through some key drivers right now first. Can we listen?
I didn't realize you were going to go to the next thing. So on Florence Sawyer, so we're, you know, I brought that up before, the kindergarten, we have, what is it, three classes?
Yes.
So going into first grade, I mean, the kids are, there's pretty high numbers. They're into the, they're heading to the mid twenties for class right now. So how many teachers do we have in the first grade that they're going, I mean, is it four teachers that they're going?
You know what, don't ask the chief in front of me and I apologize. I would say though, he, Joel and I sat down and had some really solid conversation on the request and on the needs, and that was not something that was brought up. So I want to just review some totals and then I'm going to go into some details. Last year, the FY17 voted budget was of fifty million, three nineteen, two forty-nine. Right now, just effective tonight, just effective tonight, but quite frankly, will already change again tomorrow. The net total budget right now is fifty-three million, eight thirty, one eighty-three. A total net dollar change of three million, five ten, nine thirty-three, which tonight sits at a total percentage change of six-point-nine-eight percent. Again, this is a work in progress. It is our goal to have that percentage be less than five percent within the next couple of days. That's where we're aiming. We're really aiming to have that around that four percent mark, four point something. That's the goal. So this, we already know, in fact, we had things happen just at press time that we said, should we go in and make that change tonight yet? And we decided not to until tomorrow morning. So that number will change again tomorrow morning as we work away at the budget process.
That's not what this represents, is it?
Actually, yes, but I'll go over that in a minute. Additions to the original budget that you did not have in there on Saturday, but that are there now. We put an OPEB line in there with fifty thousand dollars on it. That may be something you choose to forego or something you choose to keep.
Something that's a hundred thousand.
No, we cut that by fifty thousand this afternoon. We did, she's absolutely right, our original number in there was a hundred thousand. That's what we were hoping to put in there. But we've got fifty thousand in there right now. Again, that's up to you. If you decide that you want to add, put that back up to a hundred, we can do that. If you decide, no, you don't want to have any OPEB monies in there this year, we can do that as well. We also added a cost of living allowance that's now living inside of this document. I don't want to go into details because, of course, we are still in negotiations right now. So, but you need to know that there is now a cost of living increase in this budget. The new staff requests for a total of two-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, five sixty-six are also now living in this executive summary that wasn't in there on Saturday, but it's in there now. And there's also transportation increase. You know that we are going out to bid for the new transportation contract. That's, we have put an anticipated increase in there. We may have hit it on the money, we may not have, but right now, we've got something that's in there as an increased number. And I alluded earlier, as a follow-up to the Emerson survey, the notion of health and wellness increase of ten thousand dollars seed money, which we had alluded to earlier. So those are new additions tonight that you just need to keep in mind. And then we took a look and said, okay, there's also some other considerations that we want you to keep in mind as we go through this. You heard it again tonight, it's not the first time you've heard it, that there was a loss to the kindergarten grant of sixty thousand dollars that's not coming back. There's an increase in health insurance that's in here. The ongoing negotiations, because we don't know where that's going to land, so that's still a question mark to us. The offsets, you'll notice, are already different. If you take a look at the last page, and if I can just bring your attention to that right now, on the executive summary, if you take a look at that back page, you'll see that there are zero dollars there where once before, there would have been grant offsets. So you'll see that as for the grants that got it, this is looking different. Loss of school choice funds, two years ago, you were sitting at one-point-three million in terms of funds coming into the district. Last year, you were at seven-hundred thousand. And this year, there's a loss of three-hundred thousand. I believe that there's four-hundred thousand budgeted right now. E and D, we put a million dollars in here from E and D, anticipated. That's not really where we wanted to go, but that's what's sitting in there right now. We also have a loss of forty thousand dollars from Circuit Breaker between last year and this year, a loss of twenty thousand from Title II A. Substitute teacher increases are up, but that's because that was one of those lines that was always under-valued or under-funded, if you will. And so this number of a hundred-and-fifteen thousand is, pretty much articulates what the average has been. There are no extended day offsets in this budget, as we had said earlier. And one of the things that we are taking a look at right now at this current budget support is one or two positions that we're looking at for potential unnatural attrition that we just, you know, as I spoke with the principals today, saying, I'm still this many million too much, you need to start thinking about where the cuts can come inside of your buildings. I'm waiting, I haven't heard back from the high school. We're waiting on that, and that will probably affect some things tomorrow as well. So that's kind of the broad view, overview. And Alia, I see that my battery is low, I'm just saying if I need to.
Can you make these visible on the website?
Oh, happy to post this.
Can you please post those in the packet so that we can go look at them and others can look at them?
Absolutely. So if you take a look at the executive summary, I'm just going to bring, again, just a bit of a quick highlight to point out a couple of places I'd like you to take a look at. So on the first page, under System Wide, go down about halfway and there's your OPEB line. So you can go across there to see that, the funds there. If you were to compare numbers throughout this to numbers that you saw on Saturday throughout, you will see cuts made extensively throughout the entire budget. And if you think about the fact that we've got up here six-point-nine-eight percent tonight with all in versus where you were sitting at Saturday without the COLA, without the transportation number, without some of these things, and tonight you're sitting at a six-point-nine-eight all in. So that's quite a bit of a shift. So I just want you to kind of keep that on your radar. So if you go down and compare, if you were to just look at this budget without any thought of how much it was going to cost the towns to fund it, I think it's a good budget, an overall good budget. Unfortunately, we always have to keep in mind what the reality is of what we can afford. Thanks, Alia. So if you take a look at your own leisure throughout, you'll see a number of lines are quite different than they were on Saturday when you were here. And we've gone back, we've had multiple, I'd say countless meetings since Saturday with our staff coming back in saying, do we really need this? Do we really need this? And Jeff was one of those people. Technology was another one when we went back. Technology, we still may see more cuts coming between now and Friday. So that kind of gives you the broad overview. Like I said, SPED was the one area that I really didn't, I really didn't go after and touch at all and to make any cuts. So you'd be wasting time if you were looking through there. Technology will. Athletics is pretty much covered. The schools themselves, there were a couple of changes in the schools. One thing that we found is that the schools had, there was actually some reporting for the schools for the early literacy and teaching and learning. And so we found one or two areas where there was some duplication of requests. And so we cleaned that up, as soon as we found it, we cleaned it up. And so that's why you have the one picture tonight moving forward. I don't think that there's anything else, again, I have spoken with Dr. Graham. I think there are a couple of areas of the high school that I'd like to look at some cuts. Waiting to see what he comes back with and then we'll have, he and I will have that conversation. So at the end, this is at the last page, that's where you sit tonight. And then there was, I believe it's as an assessment page that you may have found it's way too, I'm not sure. Yes, you've got it there. And again, this is just where you happen to sit tonight. Jennifer?
Can you explain the salary reserve? That's a new line item.
Yes, and I prefer not to.
Okay.
Thank you. For obvious reasons.
Well, and that number is arbitrary.
That number is absolutely arbitrary. And to be honest with you, that number is going to change tomorrow. That's one of the numbers that's going to be changing. So that's why I'd rather not go into any detail on it.
Okay, so I think I know the answer to this. I can't even believe I'm asking it, but, but the heck. When we look at the retirees, we take that Masters Five now. When we look at backfilling those positions, are we still using the fully loaded cost?
So actually, I'd love you to speak to that, let me start and then Pat, you can fill in because we actually had some of this conversation. And as we were in negotiations the other night, talking about that one particular clause, now I understand that's one of the reasons why, because that particular payment is made in the next year.
No, I'm not talking about the ten.
Oh, okay.
No, 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 for planning purposes, yeah, I don't want to talk. For planning purposes, what we noticed a year ago was that when we were, when we would have retirees, people that were going to be retiring in the upcoming year's budget, the fully loaded.
Right.
Salary was there.
That's correct.
Versus the, whatever the average is for Masters Five.
Right.
Are we, that was a big bone of contention.
And I'm saying, what we know now is that there was some rationale for doing that because there was an additional payment that needed to be made in that next year. It's not the whole piece, but that payment is made there.
I'm not understanding.
That payment for the early retirement piece is made in the next year.
So when an employee announces in advance they're going to retire, they, under contract, have the benefit of a particular.
Amount, that's correct.
And that's perhaps ten thousand more or less, something like that? So you're saying part of why we're not recognizing the lower cost for the new hire, which has less, comes out of lower staff? Is that part of that is absorbed by that?
That's correct.
But, but.
It's not the only thing, but that's.
What's the Masters Five, fifty-four, fifty-five?
Fifty-one.
So if it's fifty-one, and when you retire, you're not retiring at sixty-one, you're retiring at eighty, ninety, there's some wiggle room in there. And why, so can't we get a little more?
We've had this discussion, and I don't, I'm not disagreeing with you and I think that, I think that you're absolutely right. I think the other thing too that we've had discussion is, do we keep those positions? That's why I was saying tonight, you know, do we take a look at some of these? For example, we have a retirement in Lancaster right now that, in talking to the principals, we don't feel that we're going to backfill at all. So we're taking that piece right out.
Yeah, but that's separate. I think we need to have, you know, I think we need to, my desire is to go in with, and I don't care if you take the Masters Five plus the ten thousand to offset the indicator. But I just don't think it's right to have that fully loaded, fully baked, you know.
And maybe they could actually be two different line items.
Yes, yes. I mean, if they need to be.
I think that that's also a good idea.
Yep, yep. But I, but I think we had a, we had a tough discussion last year about, so I think we need to make sure that's not happening. And then you can, I mean, you bring those, you bring those salaries down to where it's more appropriate.
How many, do you know how many retirees?
Right now, there's five that are on deck. One, and we've got a second one that we're considering not filling as well.
So, I mean.
Can Brooke or Pat speak to typical number of retirements a year? Is it ten would be fairly steady, does it jump up and down from year to year?
Really, it moves around, to tell you the truth. I mean, I've seen years where we've had two, and then a couple of years later, we have ten. So there's really.
It's hard to tell, because the best you get is the advanced warning.
Right.
Right, and you're allowed to, to.
Occasionally, people get notice and they end up staying another year, and that's not always reliable.
Oh, that's right.
Sometimes their birthday comes into play and they work so many months into the next year.
So, okay, so now we're at, are you good?
Yes, I'm good. So that's just, I wanted to kind of give a broad overview and say, here's where we are today, just to update you, that's all it is.
I appreciate the fact that it's now, everything's in the budget, that you have presented it to us and we're going to continue to, you're going to continue to work on it. So you folks, we need to talk about what we're going to do. I want to give you a reality check. We have our budget hearing on March first. Then we also have a week for school vacation when everybody's gone. So our next meeting is March, or February fifteenth. So given that, do you think we're going to be able to get all this done in one meeting as far as reviewing what's in the budget, horse trading, discussions? What are your thoughts here? Because personally, I know we don't want to talk about individual town assessments, but I would like to see this six-point-nine-eight at four. And what does that look like? And what recommendations would you have for that? Because I think we need to be respectful of the fact that. Because I think we need to be respectful of the fact that last year, the towns were very supportive of us. And I think the budget was a little bit, came in a little bit higher than we all had wanted to. But I think this year, we've got some other things at play.
Well, I think this year too, you're seeing the whole process, you're seeing a whole lengthy process here, which I'm hoping is helpful, you know, and I think that we're showing every step of the way. Here's where we are now, here's where we are now, and that's what you're getting tonight, it's just an update. By Friday, quite frankly, I suspect that we'll be in a very different place Friday than we are tonight, so.
So folks, what are you thinking?
Well, part of the thing is too, that we're seeing, excuse me, and it's a high number, I think, but we're seeing some of the quote offsets and so forth that have taken out, like for instance, the extended day, this was listed as revenue. That's no longer listing as revenue, so that's $200,000 that's coming out that we now account for.
That's exactly right.
You know what I mean? So there are examples that we have like that, that give a little more true figure.
Well, that's what we wanted, we wanted the
The HP leases too, and so technology, that's a raw number that you're getting, rather than investment in X number of dollars over the period of time.
But you know what, I think that's a good point to raise too, because we had to pay a chunk of, I mean, when you came in, you paid a bunch, right? So all told this year, how much have you paid in former loans and leases?
Well, if you think about it, like we, it wasn't just that, I mean, that was a piece of it.
Out of this budget, right?
Out of this budget, this current budget, I mean, you're absolutely right. And to your point, you kind of alluded to this earlier about deferring things. And I think, you know, we'd had this discussion earlier, like the buildings and the maintenance, all of a sudden, it wasn't that we ran our building budgets over, it's just that all of a sudden, there were new priorities that we had to pay for that, just by default, meant that other things were gonna have to be deferred, right? Same sort of thing here, so with technology, for example. So all of a sudden, we had to pay off all of that technology that had been ordered to the tune of, memory serves may write, about $400,000. You know, and now the $200,000 to take care of it all, on top of everything, and finish paying out HP, as well as paying the one HP, which was already in the budget. But I'm saying, all in total, when you really think about it, I think we've just done an incredible job this year managing all of this. But I'm not being negative about it, but it's, it just, it gets back to trying to work within a budget that sometimes didn't have what I felt like were true numbers to work from. And here we are, trying to pull all of this together and trying to get to a workable percentage that will work for our communities. But having said that, I mean, technology, one of the things that we've said to our technology department is, in light of everything that we've been through this year, do not expect the same type of budget for next year, because you just can't do that.
I know, but then that's a scary message too, because, well, I think, I think next year, that whole technology plan, structure, vision, support, whatever, but, and Neil's not speaking.
I think it would behoove everyone, everyone here in this room, if you could actually, if you're able to, actually spell out in writing some of the differences that may be leading to a higher figure than perhaps you may have been reported in the past. And so what I mean by a percentage increase, so there's a percentage increase of like true dollars and then like, you know, I think you need to break out, and I'm not making myself clear, but you need to break out, what is true increase per se? It's all true increase, but extended, the extended day, for instance, $200,000. That $200,000 is still used in the system, that was being used as a quote offset, which was reducing the assessment. See where I'm going with this? So I think the different items that have affected this, you need to count more to show that this is what the true assessment is without pulling these offsets, without doing these various things. And that there is a price to having the proper accounting set up and the best practices. And I think, but we need to show that.
Well, and I think to your point, I'll take it even a little bit further, although I'm not sure exactly this is where you were headed, but even, dare I say, the fact that the school choice number that we're putting forward is so much less this year, and that's not a negative, that's just, that's the reality, we don't have 1.2 million to put in, we're gonna have like the 400,000, that makes a difference, you know? All of those things, the fact that we don't have the $60,000 kindergarten grant anymore, that just ups, like, those are, you know, when we take a look at the revenue that's coming in, anticipated revenue, even though our chapter 70 is up a little bit, it's not up enough to help offset the costs of the loss of revenue in other areas. So I think that's really kind of where you were going, right? It's just all of that.
Yeah, it's kind of like what you have, that you put up there for the budget considerations, but just making sure that you have the other aspects
Yeah.
that have affected the budget in there, and maybe broken out separately.
So, so, so a couple of things. One is, we're not at a point yet where, because you're still working on it, so you're gonna come back once more.
Yeah.
And then, once we get that look see, we're gonna need to be able to then say, what happens if you drop it by a quarter of a percent? What happens if you drop it by a half a percent? And what are we risking by doing that? And what scares me is we're running out of time. So if we have a meeting on February 15th and you come back, I don't wanna do this to you guys, but I don't think that we can't not add another meeting, because you come back on February 15th, you're gonna show us the rest of your next iteration, which is gonna drop it again. And then we're gonna have more discussion, and we're gonna start to say, what are the things that we need to question?
And I guess I was looking even tonight, for, to be honest with you, for a bit of direction tonight to say, am I on the right track? I mean, are you comfortable with the things that I took off of the staff requests? Or are there some things there that you feel very strongly about that? I mean, I'll go back after, for example, check after, you know, the HALE situation with the teacher numbers to see if there's a missing piece that I need to. But, you know, if you, if you feel, for example, no, maybe, you know what, you're gonna have to, if there's something in here that you feel strongly about right now, I'd kind of like to know. Otherwise, if you think that we're on the right track, then I'll just bring this to closure.
Well, I think this is your recommendation based on your discussions with what your principals say I have to have.
That's exactly right.
So if that's the case, personally, just as an individual, I'm not gonna be comfortable saying you can't have that. I'd rather just take a look at what the end result is and then say, we need to reduce. You go back and make the decisions, because you have to manage this and what comes along with it. But that's one of the reasons why, let's make sure that where we can be more specific, like with the, I know it's not a lot, so maybe it's 20, $30,000 times five, but it's still something.
Oh, no, I definitely, I definitely agree, we'll take a look at that tomorrow.
So, and that's one of the questions that I had, and I think every year, I say the same thing. Where in the foundational budget are we able to become more efficient? And if you feel that you've done that, then yes, after your next, after the next time you come in and talk with us, then we go back and say, okay, we're gonna take a quarter of a percent off, take a half a percent, and let's see where that lands, right?
I don't feel at all that there's any more efficiencies. Like, to be honest with you, I don't feel, like I said too, if you didn't have to worry about how this was being funded, I think it's a very fair, what you see here is very fair budget, I really do.
And it's really transparent.
Thank you.
So, thank you for all your reference. All right, folks, what do you wanna do? So we've got one meeting left.
The other thing you could do is to say, you know what, we want this to come in at no greater than this percent. You could do that, that's another option you've got.
I don't think we're there yet.
Okay.
I think we need another, we need to, we need to trust that you're gonna go back at it with a little bit sharper pencil and then
Sharper pencil now means cuts, though, just to be clear, that that's, you know, like, well, clearly because you can't do anything else other than cut in order to get that down to less than five.
Well, and maybe it means, you know, nobody want, I mean, you say cuts, that's a dangerous word. Because that means different things for different people.
Well, no, well, it also means different things. Like, I mean, I can see doing some more cuts for professional development, for example. I can see doing some more cuts for textbooks, I can see cuts for staff. I can see, the only way you're gonna get this number down now is by cutting away at it.
But you're saying cutting away at an increase, not necessarily cutting at what they have now, right?
Cutting away at the document as you see it right now.
Yeah, so it's not cut like what you have now, less than that, it's less, it's less of
They ask, the new ask, I know, but that's my big issue is
No, I know, I know that that's still not ideal, but it's different than
In all fairness, I didn't feel the principals asked a lot, honestly, when you take a look at this. And you'll see that I really didn't cut much with the principals or Jones Department at all. You know, because he didn't ask for much, so.
Yeah, so we're gonna send you back to really impress us that. Not that you haven't, not that you haven't, you guys have done great work, and Pat, I appreciate it. But take another crack at it, and so school committee. We need to decide if you would be willing to add, I know another meeting next Tuesday.
Valentine's Day?
Okay, never mind.
I'm willing.
And my husband's birthday, not me.
Okay, that's not gonna work. We've gotta, what's Monday? Is that a holiday?
Doesn't it say?
The 13th. Policy has a meeting that day.
We have some sort of negotiations out there.
We do. Okay, I'm gonna talk to Alida.
I'll get some dates.
And, yeah, see, because I don't think that one more Yeah, I don't think that one more meeting is gonna do it, do you? Unless you guys think one more meeting will do it. Niels, Jennifer?
I don't know, I mean, it's right, it's a corruption, so.
So, so what, where we're at right now is February 15th is the only meeting we have before the budget hearing, which is when Brooke shares the budget with the communities.
Well, a budget hearing does not have to be the end of the game, because we still have two more weeks for our district agreements as we should deliver. It's basically an opportunity to be informed of the state of the nation such as our budget is at that moment, doesn't have to be the final beast.
Yeah, but if you set up that expectation
Right. It's, yeah, that's what people are gonna go with.
Well, you just have to say, every 15 minutes, this is where we are, it's gonna be changing. That's the fact of where you would be.
So anyway, what do you folks wanna do? Yes or no?
I think scheduling one, you know, hey, maybe we do finish it on the 15th and then
And then we don't need it.
We happy, all kinds are good, and then we just cancel whatever meeting.
Okay, that sounds good, thank you.
So it should be for after.
I'm going with that, and you're out of town.
Well, I'm not leaving until the beginning of March, but
And when is, when is break?
We do the 20th.
Okay. All right, so
So there's still, there's still month, there's Monday, the 27th before March 1st.
Okay, so that may be what we end up looking at, is Monday, the 27th, and that gives you guys some breathing room, right, to actually
Yeah, it's completely up to you, however, we will meet whatever your, whatever your wishes.
So I'd like to say a few things where I think there are opportunities, some of them are really policy changes. One is really looking at what have our statistics been on our turnover for staff? And then really taking our, what you were talking about in terms of the gap between the retiree pay and the future likely pay of a hire. We actually have hard work to do in terms of assessing our enterprises fully, from expenses that are, can be attributable to them. So the extended day is a good example of that, and I include health insurance and OPEB really fully assess them for that.
I don't, didn't that come up about OPEB though, that you can't assess?
For the food service, the feds wanna see that you're putting, that their grant is new money. And so you, they will allow you, according to George King last year, they'll allow you to assess food services what you're assessing your general budget. And so whatever we're assessing our general budget, a tenth of a percent, then you can assess the food service a tenth of a percent for
So I would rely on Pat to give us that data, that'd be great.
See, that's part of the true cost.
But our enterprise funds, they're all ours and we can assess them fully. And we should really do all the hard work to figure out what that could be. We could take a look at some of our revenue for rentals and also for athletics and see, on a policy basis, should we do something a little bit different this year in terms of allowing ourselves to accumulate money in both of those funds? And maybe time to take a look at it on a policy basis.
And that's a good point, because the, I mean, no, I know, but the athletics budget, we have to come up with a point of view, a specific point of view on what is the district augmenting for some of those programs? There is inequity there, I understand it's kind of asking a lot, but at the same time, there's inequity there. And I don't think that's right. So we gotta figure that out.
And I was speaking only to the field rental side, as opposed to fees for students, I understand. So I think that's an opportunity to explore.
I agree with Mark, so we have that on the FinCom agenda for Wednesday, to talk about the different schedules of fees, because that really is, I mean, if we're losing revenue, right, the only way to offset that is to generate revenue. And I mean, if we're making ourselves truly revenue neutral, it means that those costs are gonna absorb some of what you're talking about. So I think that's, that should be, in my, it should be, but that would be my first approach before starting to make cuts that are going to affect the system, to find out where the money, you know, what that differential is gonna be, and then maybe go into it at that point.
Well, to be honest with you, and that's what we were talking about even earlier, like the extended day type thing, exactly as Pat was saying, you know, if you choose to augment some of these tuitions, it will help us in other ways. So that's something that we would look forward to, for your contemplation, like at next meeting.
Yep.
Are these things that you wanna do or not, it's going to make a difference for us, there's no choice about it. Now, what we could probably, I'm just thinking aloud, what we could probably do is kind of say, if you have it in this, you know, for tuition, this is how the difference will make for us, because we already have a flavor of that anyway, as we sit here tonight.
So that's a good segue into the items for the 15th. Again, unless there's a critical item, say it again?
Just budget budget.
That's my point, unless there's a critical item, we're just gonna keep it to the budget. But we're gonna have to do a deep dive on the tuition review, have you guys come back, and on the extended day. Is there any other deep dive? You guys might have revolving accounts on the athletics, is that what you said? Or am I just got that stuck in my head and I'm obsessing over it?
No, we did start talking about where like student activity fees should be and so forth, because that's another thing. It's not neglecting people in the district, but student activity fees are the same, they've been the same for a bajillion years, right? I mean, they're well under, they're well under other districts from what you were telling us, if I understood correctly.
For the
Student activity fees?
What do you mean athletic?
Athletic, athletic fees.
Yeah, we, also really low in comparison to surrounding
So, comparable
And to Mark's point with building rentals, we're renting things like $75 or whatever, you know, I mean
I think it's like $50 to rent the high school auditorium?
So the point is, it costs more to unlock the door for the district. So the question is, maybe we just don't rent it as much as we have, if that's what it comes out to. In other words, if we can't justify the fees and we can't get people, well, that's okay. The door doesn't open, the expenses don't go out the window. So that might be another way.
We do have some obligation to the towns for local use.
That's right.
Ole Miss, they're telling me that.
So all in all, I don't know how you folks feel about where we are right now. I really respect the work that's been done, I mean, we've got work to do, but, thank you.
So it's also, it's extended day and it's also preschool and kindergarten.
That's right.
Right. Yeah. Okay, we're good? So given that, assume that the meeting minutes of February 1st are good, you guys are good to go with that. And I just need a motion to adjourn. Jennifer, and a second is Mark. All those in favor? unanimous.
I'm doing Alida, I'm the leader right now.
Oh, you're Alida.